Okay, folks, welcome. Let's call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge. I'd like to ask our fire department to lead us in the pledge. It's their ear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. We have a very busy schedule. I have a few announcements before we get started I'd like to talk to you about. First of all, this is our first attempt at broadcasting this meeting live on YouTube. It's not going to be perfect, but I'm going to need your help in the audience, okay? So while we're doing this live streaming, the two microphones that we're using are above that TV. So I would just ask, keep your conversations down at the back of the room because you'll get picked up on those microphones. Also, when you speak, please make sure that you come up to the podium. During a public hearing that we're going to have in a minute, we will need your name to the record if you comment on a public hearing. Also, Mr. Reesman is not with us tonight, our clerk, so Deputy Clerk Kenny will be calling the role and taking our minutes, and I'll have some more information shortly. And Deputy Clerk, if you could please take the role.
Bob Kramer?
Here.
Janet Vance?
Here.
Kim Pearson?
Here.
Dan Dillon-Hay?
Here.
In clerk absent.
Thank you. Some very quick announcements that I just did want to make because I think it's really The Michigan Public Service Commission has given Tuscorra a $200,000 grant for this building, and I really want to thank Kelsey, our library director, and Chief Temple, and Ron Odenwald for their assistance in preparing that grant. Frankly, I didn't think we were going to get it. I mean, we worked on that, what, day and night for two weeks? And believe it or not, there were over 1,000 applicants. Usually, there's 100. They only selected 100. Only 22 of those were municipalities. One of them was us of that 22. So we got a great team here, all working together. In case you didn't know, the reason we need this funding is because our south wall in the basement has some severe structural issues caused by lack of gutters, drainage, and everything else. So that wall has to be stabilized. We're going to have to dig all the way down to the foundation and put in, excuse me, new drainage. We're going to have to put in gutters. We've also asked for our fire alarm to be upgraded because it's not working right now. It hasn't been working for years, right, Ron? It's never been working. We have the pipes and everything. We need security cameras on voting boxes and other things that are required by law. And we initially asked, I believe, for $240,000 with $25,000 or so coming from the township. We didn't get all of it. We got 200 of it, but I really think we'll be able to do about everything we need to do. If not, we'll just have to take it out of pocket because we've got to take care of this facility. But we'll be working with the library closely on that and the police department since they're one-third partners in each of this. The other news I wanted to let you know, I announced it at the sewer meeting. You may recall that we applied through Congressman Bergman to the United States House of Representatives for a $6.3 million sewer expansion called Page 3, which is north of the bridge on the Howe Marine side and the Indian River Marina side. We only got $1 million approved by the House. They gave us two options. If we can't give you the $6.3, is there something we can give you to get you started? That was asked in the application. Well, it didn't make the cut in the Senate initially, but now it has been forwarded from the House and accepted by the Senate. So we have a very, very good chance of getting that $1 million according to Senator Peters' office in the next few days. So when you see Congressman Bergman or his staff, you might want to thank them once again for helping us out. And also with our two senators, as you know, infrastructure throughout the nation's pretty much a bipartisan issue. So I just want to publicly thank our representatives and senators for helping us with that. So having said that, we'll continue on with our meeting. Are there any board member conflict of interest statements?
None.
None.
None. Let the record show none. We're now going to have a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing for anyone who wants to speak about the improvements to, proposed improvements to Navinoy Trail. Okay.
Open at 7:07?
And closed at 7:08. Board members, even though two individuals were not able to be here, we did get a letter from them about this project, so we added that this evening for you to look at. I just, you know, these are folks that are not here in deference to our summer residents. I thought you'd want to see that.
Those letters will be included with our public hearing information.
Right. That's correct. Okay, so our next item is approval of meeting agendas or a motion?
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll support that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public comment on agenda items, please. Okay, moving right along. Approval of consent agenda.
I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
So Janet Vance made the motion and Kim Pearson seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just would like some leeway from the board. I do want to explain about our delegation of authority, which is 8H. Mr. Rogers, as you may recall, raised that issue about the boat launch at one point never being officially turned over to the Parks Commission. So we got with board members, we got with our township lawyer, I'm sure you all remember the legal opinion, but it basically said, and I didn't know this, there's something in the law that says all wharves, piers, landings on a Michigan body of water are under control of the Township Board, and he recommended that we delegate all of that to the Parks Commission immediately. So it's on the record now. We went back almost, what, 15 years? I couldn't find it, maybe it was there, but it's on the record now. So new business. We have a Navinoy Trail Resolution Number 4. Just bear with me so I can get into it. I'm sorry, old business. You're correct. Special assessment, Resolution Number 4. It's in your packet. I'll move to approve Resolution Number 4.
I'll support that.
Support by Treasurer Dillon-Hay. I'll read this before we discuss. Township of Tuscorra County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan. Minutes of a regular meeting, the Township Board of the Township of Tuscorra County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan, held on March 5, 2024 at 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. The following preamble and resolutions were offered by Member Kramer, supported by Member Dillon-Hay. Whereas the Township Board of the Township of Tuscorra County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan, after doing legal notice, has reviewed a special assessment role prepared for the purpose of defraying the cost of certain improvements as described in Exhibit A attached here too and made a part of. Whereas the Township Board deemed said special assessment role to be fair and equitable as reported to it by the supervisor. Now therefore, be it resolved that said special assessment role shall be designated 2024 Navinoy Trail Special Assessment Role, now referred to as the role, and the district against which it is spread shall be designated, quote, "2024 Navinoy Trail Special Assessment District", end of quote. The Township Board hereby finds that the allocation of cost to the partials comprising the role are fair, just, equal, and in proportion to the benefit conferred and the methodology employed in making such allocation is incorporated herein by reference and approved. The Township Board further finds that the anticipated increase in the value of the property resulting from the improvements described in Exhibit A attached here too is proportional to the cost of said improvements. The 2024 Navinoy Trail Special Assessment Role in the amount of $30,190 as prepared and reported to the Township Board by the supervisor be and the same hereby is confirmed. The role shall be levied in one annual installment to be due on December 1, 2024. Said installment of the role shall bear no interest. The assessment made in the role are hereby ordered and directed to be collected, and the township clerk shall deliver the role to the township treasurer with the township clerk's warrant attached commanding the treasurer to collect the assessment herein in accordance with the directions of the Township Board with respect here too, and the treasurer is directed to collect the amounts assessed at the same time become due. All resolutions and partial resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution be and shall hereby are rescinded. Is there any discussion? I just want to thank the Sheboygan County Road Commission for putting in $25,000 into this project, and of course, the township is putting in their traditional 10%. It looks like the front lotters will pay, as you've seen before, $800 on a one-time basis on their full taxes, and the back lotters will be $390. And I'm looking forward to having that done this summer. Any discussion?
I would just like to append the number from Navinoy Trail Resolution Number 4 to 2024-4.
Where's that at?
So at the very beginning where we talked about that it's Resolution Number 4, if we could call it 2024-4, then we would know historically how to find it later on.
Correct. That's exactly right. There should be label that one.
Thank you.
Okay.
What do you want to search for?
Okay. Do we need to vote on that separately?
Yes, we have to have a roll call vote.
Okay.
But we don't have to vote on change in the number.
Oh, not the change in the number, just the roll call for the resolution itself.
Okay. Penny, if you could call the roll again, please.
Janet Vance?
Aye.
Kim Pearson?
Yes.
Bob Kramer?
Aye.
Dan Dillon-Hay?
Aye.
The motion is declared adopted. DDA, Mr. Nybel.
Sue's coming up, too, because she thinks things better at night. As you know, we're--
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Dan Nybel, Indian River DDA.
And Sue Fisher, DDA Treasurer.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
So as you know, we're trying to get the poles removed from the right side of the street skate and go underground. We do have a final estimate from Consumers Energy, which is $140,915. We do have to pay for the bearing from the poles, or excuse me, the changing of the meter boxes on people's businesses. That brings us up to $170,201.84. We do have concrete that's going to have to be repaired because they're going to cut through, and some spots, some slots are boring. Their estimate is $20,000 on that. And we had one bid that's not in from a business owner because we have to get hold of the electrician, Consumers Energy, and myself, which myself is not the problem, it's the other two. So they can, because the original plan was to move the meter box to the front of the building, we can't do that. Some energy, the electrical inspector says we have to do something different. So we have to get together with everybody and do it. So I'm going to say that's probably going to be, because it's going to be quite an elaborate one, it's going to be about $13,000. I might be high, but I'd rather guess higher than have to come back and tell you something different, which gives you up to $203,284. The Consumers Energy has to be paid on the day that we sign the contract, which hopefully will be in April, because we're starting, they're hoping that we can get started in the end of April and have this finished before June. Then we also have to have 2/3 of the money down for the hookups so that the electricians can get the materials and stuff like that. So I'm going to say that we're probably going to be in the $160,000 to $170,000 range. Consumers has to be paid, like I said, when we sign the contract.
$149,000.
Pardon?
$149,000.
Yeah, $140,915 has to be paid that day. Then I'm going to turn it over to Sue.
So I guess why we're here today is because of what we have, the DDA has, in their accounts right now. What we need is a front until we can apply for reimbursement from USDA for the funds. Once they see that we've paid and we can send them a cancel check and whatever, we will get reimbursed. It was, we'll sit down. So I guess that's what we're asking for now, is that we could be front of the money, and then we pay it back once we get the money from USDA.
So you just need some short-term bridge financing?
Yeah.
About a month, probably. Month, six weeks.
Yep.
USDA, maybe two months.
No, they've always--
They've been pretty good.
No, no, no.
Really?
Oh, the minute they get it, we have gotten reimbursed.
That's pretty efficient for us.
Yeah?
That's good.
And as you know, this ends the 1st of August. So we have got to, I mean, if we're in contract, we can get it done.
You have to obligate the money.
Right.
By that time. Understood.
Right. We do have a glitch. We have a glitch in it at the moment. If we can't get SAM taken care of, USDA won't reimburse us.
Who gets SAM taken care of even if we have to have General Bergman help us because that's where we are at this point?
I mean, it'll cancel the project.
Yeah.
Because we don't have the money.
So that's what we're asking tonight, is just a front on the funds and--
So how much of the project is going to be covered under USDA? Is it 100%?
100%.
Wow.
We have that much--
Well, we've already met our co-pay--
You're matched, yeah.
Yes, our matching fund.
And this is a loan, and we know that.
Yeah.
But we have enough of the loan money left to cover this.
What do we got? Who do we have to work with to get the SAM account?
I'm willing to come in. I don't understand, I guess I'm just, we've never had a problem in the past. It always went through. I don't know. I did, not knowing that someone else was working on it, when I got the letter, the email from Keith, I went online. Because it is not the correct internet connection IP, I couldn't do it from home. And plus, I don't have, I mean, I would be willing, I would have done a new email, new passwords and everything, but I can't because it's the wrong IP address. And so I let--
Ms. Fisher got ahold of Jay several weeks ago, if not several months ago, and offered to help, but just the way the system is set up, it just won't--
Right, right. I, yeah, you know, once I get the email saying you guys are going to expire, darn right, I'm going to try to correct it.
I can tell you from personal experience, sitting next to this man, the level of frustration caused by these new rules and these changes is just, it's driving us all crazy.
90 minutes on hold today.
Well, I, yeah, I wouldn't have done that.
And every time we sit and dock, I mean, we can go through the whole story. We got a snack. But if you want to come in and help us, we'll take--
Well, yeah, I just don't understand--
Yeah, well, we'll be glad to explain it to you.
Neither do we.
Yeah, we don't either.
We need, so basically, it's, we need this piece of paper. Here's this piece of paper. That's not good enough. We need that piece of paper. Here, that piece of paper. Nope, that's not good enough.
So they have a whole bunch of new rules--
And everything, everything that we submitted last year that got it through was rejected. Everything.
Okay.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah, I mean, it's been an effect--
So do you still want to volunteer to help?
Well, it's been, yeah, absolutely. I want this done.
We want this project--
We do, too.
And we do, too.
We can quit.
No, you can't. You two aren't going anywhere. We need you.
So you need, so with your front money, you were saying you need $168,000 to get started?
Right, right. Yeah, we have enough, I mean, we would have enough to cover the 2/3, plus we would be getting our money from the treasurer, the county treasurer, April, May?
But we don't get that much anymore because we, our loan has got to be met.
Well, I understand, but we will have the funds to cover that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, basically, we're not asking, the DDA has approximately $163,000 in our account right now. So part of that, I mean, that can come out of that, but we have that little bit of money that we don't have. So we just want to make sure that all our Ts are crossed and Ds are dotted so we don't go like you are, saying, oh, now what do we do?
Yeah.
Because it's not very far away. We're only talking another, he's planning on being up the 1st of April, so we're looking four weeks away.
Yeah, and as you know, we have spent almost $400,000 on sewers that have yet to be reimbursed and may never be reimbursed.
Yes, they will. It's going to go through.
Yep. There you go, Sue.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Well, we haven't voted on it yet, so I can't say that--
I know, I'm just saying, you got to be--
But I have to defer to the treasurer, I really--
No, I think that this is, I blame you weren't doing this several months ago before the December takes were--
During the skinny season?
Yes, the skinny season, although I'm going to retort that phrase.
Thank you.
But, yeah, I, everybody wants to see this done. It's a short-term loan. I'm confident we can get the SAM thing straightened out.
So what's the exact amount you're asking for?
$163,000 is what we have to--
No, we only need the 140--
No, because we have to have 2/3 of it.
I know, but we've got 160 in our--
Well, I know, that's why I say, but that's the total. So we've got 160 in our account, so, you know, we're talking about a few thousand dollars.
Just give me a figure so I can write--
140, $140,915.
140, I'm sorry, say it again.
$140,915.
Which I'm going to round up in my motion to--
150.
Transfer $141,000 to the DDA temporarily so that they can fund this project.
I second that.
I thought you said 140, huh?
140, no, because they have money.
We have the money for the other stuff in our account.
And she said 149--
144,900.
140,915.
140.
Oh, okay, understood.
So Jan, your motion was to transfer $141,000 to the DDA account, correct?
Correct.
I second that.
To fund this--
To fund the project, yeah.
Yes, this project, yes. It will be reimbursed through the SAM account.
Through USDA?
Yes.
Not the SAM.
By the SAM account, through the, by the USDA, through the SAM account.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe you could restate the motion.
Yeah, maybe I could, maybe. We'll see, we're going to see.
Because it's a loan.
Yes. Short-term loan. I move that we loan the DDA $141,000 with no interest for the purpose of this moving utility pole project, which will be reimbursed by the USDA through the SAM account.
I second.
I already did.
Okay. Good. Janet seconded it?
I did.
Motion made by Treasurer Dillon-Hay. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
I think we need a roll call vote.
You need a roll call vote. Yes, ma'am?
I agree, so, yes.
Janet Vance?
Yes.
Kim Pearson?
Yes.
Bob Kramer?
Aye.
Janet Dillon-Hay?
Aye.
I'm going to make you keep saying it until you get over your fear.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
That's exciting.
Between that and tearing up the Phase 1 sewer area, it's going to be quite the summer.
Hopefully ours will be done by first of June.
Oh, that'd be wonderful.
That'd be great. The community has been waiting for this for a long time, and it looks so nice down here.
We will figure out the budget adjustments.
Moving on, the board previously authorized Devoe Beach Bathroom Grant application, but we do need to take public input. Is there anyone here that would like to come up to the podium and speak about these bathrooms? Or the project itself?
Can somebody tell us what the project is? I mean, I saw the picture, which--
Yes, ma'am. The question was, will somebody tell us what the project is? We are applying for a grant to Passport DNR, which is 7525. They pay 75%. We would know, the deadline to apply is the end of March. It would be decided in December. Even if authorized, we don't have to accept the grant, but we are required by our own ordinance that if and when sewers are installed in Phase 1, the Devoe Beach bathrooms must be removed, their container toilets, that ground has to be remediated. We have to drill a well, we have to have running water, and we have to have ADA accessible bathrooms hooked to the new sewer project. Is that all right? Any questions or comments?
What about location?
Same place. Same place where the toilets are now, and if you'd like to go to our board packets, there's actually a drawing.
I have it, but I can't. My magnifying glass--
I can get you a bigger one if you want. Okay, so public input is closed. Let's go ahead and talk about this Passport Grant Program, which will be Resolution 24, not '02, but '05. So this would be Resolution 2024-05. Michigan Recreation Passport Grant Program, Resolution of Authorization Local Unit of Government Match Without Donated Funds. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Trustee Vance makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Trustee Pearson seconds. I'll read the resolution. Township of Tuscorra County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan. Minutes of a regular meeting, the Township Board of the Township of Tuscorra County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan, held on March 5, 2024 at 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. The following preamble and resolution were offered by the members, as you've just heard. Whereas Tuscorra Township supports the submission of an application titled Devoe Beach-- whereas Tuscorra Township supports the submission of an application titled "Devoe Beach Modern Restrooms" to the DNR Recreation Passport Grant Program for improvements to include the replacement of the existing vault toilets with modern restroom facilities, whereas the proposed project is listed in the Tuscorra Township Recreation Plan 2023-2027, and whereas the Tuscorra Township is hereby making a financial commitment to the project in the amount of $46,250 of matching funds in cash and/or force account work. And now therefore be resolved that the Township Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the submission of a Recreation Passport Grant Application for $138,750 and further resolves to make available its financial obligation amount of $46,250 of a total of $185,000 project cost during the 2024-2025 fiscal year. All resolutions and part of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution be and the same hereby are rescinded. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Jan Delahoe?
Aye.
Bob Kramer?
Aye.
Kim Pearson?
Yes.
Janet Vans?
Yes.
Resolution is declared adopted, thank you. We have another resolution, Resolution 2024-0...
Six.
Six?
Your packet says '03, unless you renumbered.
Yeah, we renumbered, restore local choice. Before we discuss this, do we have a motion to start?
To start?
Is there a motion?
I make a motion, let forward.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, with the board's approval, I'd like Debbie, surprise you, Ron Odenwald, to talk about this resolution and educate us a bit about it.
Thank you, board. If you recall from the February meeting, we mentioned this briefly, there is a petition here on the front table to be signed by anyone so willing. On the last legislative day of the 2023 Michigan State Legislature season, the House and Senate voted to end local choice for the siting of wind and solar projects. What this means in a nutshell is that any local decisions, local planning and zoning at the local or county levels were rescinded and moved to a four-member unelected committee in Lansing. This petition, or this resolution and the petition that it references are not a statement about your position on wind or solar, it does not address that at all. Its sole purpose is to restore the siting, meaning the placement and approval of wind and solar projects to local government control. This has been a trend in Lansing, there's a similar legislation moving regarding sand and gravel pits, and it just, it's contrary to the opinion of local governments having control over their own destiny. So there is a group called the Citizens for Local Choice that brought forward this petition, got its language approved by the Board of Canvassers, and I'll explain more if I, if you allow me to read the resolution. So the resolution states, whereas on January 19, 2024, the Board of State Canvassers approved the summary of purpose and form of the initiative petition being sponsored by the Ballot Campaign Committee, Citizens for Local Choice, to repeal Part 8 of the Clean and Renewable Energy and Energy Waste Reduction Act as added by Public Act 233 of 2023, whereas on February 20, 2024, the Michigan Township Association joined the Michigan Farm Bureau in supporting this petition. Whereas, the language, petition language was approved, as approved, states in quoting, amend the Clean and Renewable Energy and Energy Waste Reduction Act by repealing statewide requirements for the construction and development of certain wind and solar energy facilities, including assessment of environmental, natural resources, and farmland projects, wages and benefit requirements for workers, setback distance, size and height of structures, and amount of light and sound emitted. If enacted, this proposal would allow local units of government to determine their own standards for such facilities. Whereas, the Township Board of Tuscorra also supports the language and intent of this petition to restore local control in the siting of wind and solar projects statewide, therefore be it resolved that the Tuscorra Township Board of Trustees hereby supports the repeal of Part 8 of the Clean and Renewable Energy and Energy Waste Reduction Act as added by Public Act 233 of 2033. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution be and the same hereby are rescinded. Adam Clark?
Is there any more discussion? I'm very, I'm personally passionate about this, our county planning commission that does our work for us, I've never heard a complaint about this issue, about, you know, solar and placement of solar, and I know it's come up before at the planning commission, and they handled it, so I see no reason to turn this over to an unelected board of four people that do nothing but set rates of utilities. What, what do they know about Sheboyden County? Our planning commission knows what Sheboyden County needs and wants.
And Sheboyden County did approve plans, there was plans for a solar farm in Aloha that were moving forward, the company changed their mind and backed out.
We have two members of the county planning commission with us, is it all right if they comment?
Sure.
Do you have any comment at all?
I'm in support of the resolution. Thank you.
Doc?
I don't know enough about it, I haven't been on the planning commission long enough.
Okay.
It's on that country, probably before.
Well, as Ron said, I think the key here is how you feel about solar or wind is one thing, but I don't like giving up the county's...
Right, it's about having Lansing dictate to the local counties and villages and towns.
And I see us as supporting our county, yes ma'am.
So is the county adapting this resolution too?
We're hoping, we're gonna present it.
I don't know that it makes any difference, but we can write...
Yeah, no, we're gonna present it, it is symbolic, absolutely, but we did discuss this in the Michigan Townships Association meeting here in this room last Thursday, we believe we're the first ones in the county to do this, but there are several others that played, took our language and plagiarized in their language, so I think we'll see many counties doing this. There's also a number of trade organizations that have jumped on this bandwagon, be it, you know, after this board packet was put together, Michigan Builders Association being one of them.
And just to add a little, John Demus was in the room when this was discussed at the county meetings.
Right.
And he's adamantly in support.
Correct.
As I recall.
Yes, and I believe Representative Cabot is as well.
Yes.
The other thing that really bothers me, board, is that, okay, so I know at the next planning commission meeting, there's some discussion about a cell tower or a communications tower, what's gonna be next? Our planning commission at the county's not gonna be allowed to decide that either.
Don't like the message.
You know, we're opening the floodgates here, so, is there any further discussion? Any further comments from our planning commissioners? Ron?
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you very much, could you call a roll, please?
Jan Delahoe?
Aye.
Bob Kramer?
Aye.
Kim Pearson?
Yes.
Janet Vans?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion declared adopted, thank you, Ron, and thank you, commissioners. CIP review, I believe is next.
Yes.
So, I got everything from the DDA, thank you, DDA. I didn't get anything from parks, but I think we can still work with this. I just wanted to go down this list to tell you what some of this hen scratch is, if we could start with the, just real briefly, with the river steps, bridge steps, we know that that's going on, we're still waiting on the handrails, thus, that's why it's blocked off. At our last DDA meeting, we canceled the next one. The pickleball courts were completed, the runway was marked and seal-coded, thank you to our volunteers for the marking. The township parking lot is pie in the sky, so to speak, we are making some progress, we've all seen the plans. I would say that we move that, my suggestion is to move it to 2025. The cemetery, Oak Hill, has been completed, the emergency sewer pump replacement, which is, was completed and funded, the basketball court resurfacing, we all know that's in real bad shape, we didn't get any input from planning, from the parish commission, but it's in their five-year plan, and they were very vocal about it last time, I would like to see that remain. The West Burt Lake boat launch, I would like to see that remain, but I would like to push that to 2025 because of our sewer expenses, mostly. Devoe Beach bathroom replacement, that would be, I would have to upgrade the cost to 185,000, since we got the more closer bids. Cooperation bathroom is in progress, so there's no reason not to continue with that. I do recommend that we scratch any further spending this year on Oak Hill because of our other requirements for the river steps and the sewers. Also, IT security upgrades, I'd like to move that to 2025 as well, because Ron has done a great job on the workaround. Ron, is, can we go to '26, or should we leave it at '25?
I'd be happy, you're '25, because in '26, you're facing a mandatory server operating system under.
Good to know, thank you very much. The emergency sewer pump, electrical generators should be singular, and it will be operational by March 11.
Oh, wonderful.
Paid for by EGLE.
Yep.
No more worry about sewer backups, and we'll be able to take the additional portable generators and go around to the other pumps if we have an extended outage. Green dock bathroom replacements, again, I didn't get any input, I would suggest we leave that there, we may, that's gonna be a difficult one anyway that we should address later, because in talking to our surveyor and the DNR and some others, we may not be able to put, there may not be enough room for bathrooms and a well because of the wetlands. So, I think that we should just leave that at 2025, and then we could pick up with Cemetery Oak Hill, Phase 3 sewer expansion, Cemetery Oak Hill, and the Marina Park boat launch. Now, one thing I should say is, when I say Cemetery Oak Hill, I probably need to change that to just cemeteries, because we also have Ohioville, and it's gonna need some minor attention at some point, some tree trimming, it's a beautiful cemetery. Then we also have, the next column is runway repave, and paving and fence replacement, the grants that we thought we were gonna get are not there, and I just think we need to push that out to '25 and '26. I know this is a lot of changes, but that's why we're going over it. Police department has all been confirmed with the chief. If we go down to DDA, the DDA voted to eliminate the update signage and charging station requirement, they still would like to stick with the other two projects that you see before you. An avenue trail boat launch, we approved, that was final approval tonight, so that's gonna move forward. We did not get enough signatures for paving that road any further, after discussions with the road commission, it's gonna take a major effort that was not included in their original estimate because of the mass amount of water that's gotta somehow be rerouted, and that road's gonna have to be dug out and built up, and even the engineering study would be expensive, and I didn't get enough signatures, so I would eliminate that we, I would recommend we eliminate that, and then Cressy Street continues to deteriorate, and I think we need to think about 2025 for that.
Definitely.
So, I know that's a lot, but if you want to go through this again, one at a time, and discuss and ask questions, now's the time.
Did you just keep open the truck?
Are you hot? I can open that.
It's, it's a personal thing.
Okay. Because I'm warm, so, it's okay, I'm gonna open this a little more.
Did you say anything about the truck replacement?
I'm sorry?
Did you, I didn't hear you say anything about the truck replacement.
It's ordered.
It's already ordered.
Okay, I didn't hear you say anything about that.
Yeah, it's in progress.
Should be here in two weeks.
Oh, wow, awesome.
Which agenda item are we on?
The CIP review.
And we're watching the board review, asking for comments.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, Sally, what did you say?
I said, are we just watching you review, or are we asking for comments?
Yes, you're just watching us review.
Okay, and when does the citizen comment period come on?
We will have a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Good question, we will have a public hearing. So, is there any comments on these changes? Anything that you would like changed? So, just to highlight it again, no change river steps, delete the parking on River Street, Cooperation Park is completed and can be scratched. Runway marking and seal coat completed can be scratched. Parking lot, changed to 2025, the Martha Street parking lot, the initial concepts have been done. Oak Hill Cemetery is completed, emergency sewer pump replacement is completed, I recommend that we retain the basketball court, but move it to 2025.
Can I ask a question about the pump?
Yes, ma'am.
If I remember correctly, and I, maybe I don't, we bought an emergency pump, but then we had to put it in service?
Yes, and they are, they are going to be able to rebuild the other, this was a spare...
Okay.
...because of a previous problem.
Right.
And no sooner than they bought it, that they had to use it, thank God we had it, but they are in the process of rebuilding the other one that they took out.
So right now, we don't have a spare, but the spare is being refurbished?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And that'll be done very, very soon, it's almost completed. As you can figure out, folks, now that our sewer system's been online for a while, we're starting to get stuff breaking down, where did I leave off? Basketball court, 2025. West Boat Launch, 2025. Devoe Beach bathroom replacement would be summer of 2025. Cooperation Park bathrooms are in progress. In fact, Doug's been working on those pretty... Quite a bit with the weather. And I know the Parks Commission discussed it at their last meeting. We can delete the truck replacement, Oak Hill Cemetery. The IT upgrade should be pushed to 2025 according to Ron's recommendation. The sewer pump electrical generators, we can scratch because it's completed this month. Green Dock's bathroom is questionable, but I would leave it for 2025. The remainder of those lines down to Marina Park Boat Launch Bathroom Replacement, I would leave as is. I would move the airport projects to 2025 and '26, depending on federal or state funding. No change to the Police Department. Two changes to the DDA, eliminating signage and vehicle charging station. And on the last one, eliminating additional work on Avenue Trail. Is there any further discussion?
Looks good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And yes, we have to... We are required by our Chapter Four policy to have a public hearing. And this then would be a draft. And after the public hearing, we'll vote on it again. You can make changes again, depending on what you hear from the public. What's the next one?
Main meeting day.
We have a collection. So on our regular meeting day. So we need to reschedule that. Is there a preferred date and a motion for that?
I'm always going to jump in for getting an extra week to get the Treasurers Report and the other financials cleaned up in order to get them out to the public ahead of time. I'm often scrambling.
Yes.
So if we could move the meeting back a week, that'd be great.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yes. May 14.
May 14. I set me down.
Okay. Discussion. If we have to pay bills at the end of April, for example, we could just have a quick bill meeting if we absolutely have to, right? Take just a few minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Compensation rate, is that the next one? Yes, it is. Parks has requested a setting at $18 an hour.
Just for the seasonal employees, yes?
Correct. Here, we're complying with our attorney's guidance that only the board can set compensation according to MCL 41.426B. And the chairman of the Parks Commission sent us a request, which is in your packet. So that's what they're asking for.
They don't want a range.
That's what they're asking for.
Okay.
I did have our staff... Last year, our three seasonal employees made $14. We had a seasonal employee with the Police Department who made $15. We did some checking with local businesses. And those local businesses are starting... What was it, Chris?
14.
Starting at 14. I think some of these folks are second season. I know Burger King's advertising 14 to 17, but I talked to the manager. They all start at 14. I talked to McDonald's. They all start at 14. This is outside work, a little more difficult. And they've been with us for a while, so... I'm not sure that $18 is... I have a personal problem with $18. That's more than our office staff makes. But I'm certainly willing to entertain suggestions.
As a point of reference, federal prevailing wage in Traverse City is $17.76. I know we're two hours from Traverse.
And the cost of living is far higher. So is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that pay $15 an hour. They were... My explanation is, they made $14 an hour last year. This is going to be their third year, as I understand it. So I think, you know, a dollar an hour extra is good compensation for their experience and to try to hold out to them. I mean, if they went to a fast food place, they'd all be making $14 an hour, no matter how much experience they had because it takes forever to get a raise from those kind of places. So I think taking into consideration that this is their third season, and I'd like to retain them, but I don't think $18 an hour is...
That's an awful long motion. You want to start again?
Yeah. Well, that was my explanation. I'd like to make a motion that we pay them $15 an hour.
Is there a second?
We're still discussing this, right?
If you support it, then we can discuss it.
Okay.
Is there support?
I'll support it so that we can discuss it.
Okay.
How many people does Doug need?
Three.
Does he already have those three lined up?
I can't speak to that.
Okay.
I know he's going to advertise. He has some that doesn't want to return.
How many did he have last year?
Three.
He had three last year.
Is there anybody from Parks here?
Do you know how many wanted to return out of those three?
No, I do not.
And is three enough?
I was at the meeting. What he's concerned about is at $15 an hour, he won't find anybody. And if he doesn't move quickly and get them lined up to work, he won't have any help this next summer.
Thank you, Sally. You're going to get me in trouble.
I work for a pretty large employer in Petoskey. And like, they started at $16.50 an hour. I think $16.50 an hour is...
If I could break protocol, we have some business people. Carl, what do you think? I don't mean to punch on the spot.
This is fine. That's $14 an hour is less than any of our employees that have started for the last five years. And you're going to have a hard time maintaining quality health at that level of pay. And I'm with him. I think like 16, 17.
$16.50 an hour, I think is...
It is more on the level where it should be.
16?
16, 16.50.
I think 16.50.
Okay.
I mean, they're not getting any other benefits, really, you know? Or anything.
Young adults.
There was one over.
Okay.
I mean, it would seem to me, I mean, you know, I was an employer at one time. I started one person at this level. If he's been with me for a while, they get a little more. That's why I think it was a good question about is there a range? I mean, if it were me, I'd say X to X based on experience. But isn't that what you would do?
Yes. Years of experience definitely warrants more money.
Give them an incentive to work harder.
And I would like to give him some leeway. But we do have a motion.
Well, I can resend my motion.
Okay. Ms. Vance rescinds her motion. Is there a new motion?
I made a motion that we put it out there to start at $16.50 an hour.
Okay. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Support by Treasurer Delahay? Any further discussion?
Maybe what you could do if they don't miss any days and they are good workers, that we could give them some kind of bonus at the end of the year if they live up to the... You know, not missing the days and stuff like that. Because I know the employer that I work for, they have some kind of an incentive program like that that is very lucrative to people to help them stay on task with their attendance, so...
I'd like to see us give him a little leeway, wiggle room, even if it's 50 cents. You know, 16. Say, you know, 16 to 16.50 an hour, 16 to 17, or something, 16 to 75, 16.75 at the discretion of the supervisor. I mean, he knows his people. He's good at what he does. But that's just my thought. The motion is for 16.50.
The ones that start out at 16.50 are the same ones that are new and...
Well, that would be up to the supervisor.
If we give him a range and allow him some latitude.
Right.
Right.
Well, and bump it up to 16.50, they're making more than they did last year.
Right.
By $2.
But the starters still start out at that.
At 16.50.
The present motion would be 16.50.
Do you want to amend the motion to give him a range from 16 to 17?
I can't. Who made the motion?
I made the motion. I say 16 to 16.50.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second.
Then I really, I do think that some kind of a bonus incentive program...
I'm not sure we can do that.
We'll have to check into that.
Okay.
That might be possible, but we got to check. One of the things that we've all... That some of us in the office have talked to is about an incentive awards program to amend Chapter Five, but we haven't gotten there yet. So the motion by Trustee Pearson is 16 to 16.50 at the discretion of the supervisor. Is that correct? Seconded by me. Is there any further discussion?
When you say supervisor, you mean Doug?
Doug.
And so everybody understood that.
Yeah, our maintenance supervisor, not me. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Public comment, please. Please step up to the mic. Hi. How are you?
I'm good. I'm Kelsey, the library director, right there. So I actually wasn't planning on coming up, but I had a little input on the bonuses question. So as far as the library goes, and I don't know if it's the same for the township, but we are not allowed to use public funds for bonuses. So we have to... Any like quote-unquote bonus type thing, we basically just get a gift card from our friends group. So that's how we get a little bit around that. But yeah, for... At least for us, we can't use public funds. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you very much. Ourself, thank you.
And congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Did you want to say anything? Or should we... It's up to you.
I don't mind. Okay. So I got engaged, though.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Public comment, please.
Hello. My name's Patrick McGinnis. Does this township board really care about doing the job they were elected to do? Or are they the only game to help their friends make money? I ask these questions because after watching the video, "The Saga of the Truck Purchase on Indian River Flows", I now, more than ever, believe it is of this board's asking, what can we do for ourselves other than what can we do for the people we are representing? The main thing that stood out to me in the video is the number of times the board stated that the trucks the Park Department uses are not safe to be on the road. They have said this for more than a year, but yet every working day, Parks Department has to drive the streets of Indian River using these worn-out trucks and putting all of us at risk of liability and lawsuits. The Park Department uses these trucks to carry employees, including high school students, to work sites. We are just one accident away from a lawsuit. But rather than spending the money needed for the new truck, the board decided to spend the township funds to help a few friends. Rather than fixing or replacing the parking lot lights, which are not working and are a nighttime liability, the board once again elected to spend the township funds to help a few friends instead of helping all the people. The board during the last two years have had two law firms drop Tuscora Township as a client. One of the law firms represented Tuscora Township for many years. The other lasted about a year. I wonder why. We've also had a board member of the Parks Commission who is a highly respected member of the community and a re-attorney resigning. I wonder why. In the last two years, we've had more than 20 individuals leave elected and volunteer positions with the township. And these positions have all been filled by Bob Kramer's friends, who I believe is the reason individuals left in the first place. This is how I believe Bob Kramer is taking over the township and also he can have the power and control that he has had out of his reach all of his life. 2024 is an election year, and I ask you, do we need another four years of this? Thank you for your time.
Public comment.
Dan, I've always brought this up before, but the Village Center inter-overlay has a parking rule that says anybody can park anywhere they want. The Napa store has signs up parking for them only. That is in the Village overlay. If we apply that to everybody else that's in the business area, we're going to run out... Our parking's going to not be available for other people that are opening businesses, which is what we wanted to do with the Village overlay in the first place. That needs to be rectified. Thank you.
I'll call one down there. Thank you, Dan. Yes, ma'am.
First, I'd like to thank Chief Gordon, which is not here.
Could you state your name, please?
That's interesting. First, I'd like to thank Chief Gordon and the Park Commission for their help with the purchase of a new truck for Doug. I hope and pray I never hear the board says that they got it for him because the only thing they did was to push the Park Commission to the wall to purchase the truck. At one of the previous meeting... Previous meeting, it was stated that Doug definitely needed a new truck and the money could come out of the capital fund improvement fund. Why can't the board suggest that the park pay half and the township pay half? Was this an ultimatum or a dictatorship? So let's get back to the first board meeting. Get on board or get out of our way. This is to the clerk who's not here. What happened to the clerk sending out notifications about the meetings being held at the township? I used to receive them, but no longer get any notification. Are they being sent to the people you would like to have attend? Or have they been stopped altogether? I know you have a calendar on your website, but I don't go on your website on a daily basis to see if you have added or deleted it. It is my concerns about the... I'm very concerned about the fireworks that are being planned for this July. As for the supervisor who was in the military, I hope you would have more considerations for your fellow veterans who have PTSD and other animals. I know some veterans who have to hide in their house and get air plugs in just to get through the night. I have some friends that take their dogs out of town so he can remain calm. I'm not saying don't have the fireworks. I'm not saying don't have the fireworks, but please take in consideration that not all people love fireworks or the noise. There should not be a competition to see who has the biggest and the loudest fireworks, rather who can show their pride to be an American. When calling the treasurer's office, is it a common policy, is it, is it a common policy for someone to answer her phone and not identify themselves and answer questions on her behalf? Or should they have let the phone go to voicemail where I could have left the message and waited for her call to be returned?
Public comment, please.
I'd just like to throw a couple dates out there. Tomorrow, March 6th, the Kiwanis has a blood drive here in the steering room. On March 21st, a Thursday, the Sheboygan County Veterans Affairs in cooperation with the Federal Veterans Administration has a veterans fair at the Sheboygan Eagles. On April 27th, the last Saturday of the month, the Kiwanis Club of Indian Rivers having a food distribution once again at the high school, North Athletic Parking Lot. And lastly, I would like to give a huge thank you to Ginups, who donated the temporary parking lot lighting for our election day. We had called there with the intention of renting that light tower, and as soon as they found out who it was for and what it was for, they volunteered to donate that. So thank you so much to Ginups.
Thank you.
Board comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. He's waiting for Ron to finish. What do I, oh, hello. My name is Trudy Maves. Couple comments. We had an audit at the end of 2023. I looked it up on the state website. There are some corrective actions that needed to be taken. Just wondering where we are with that. I also looked at the financial statements, went back to January of 2023. There's been a change in the reports that were generated for this month. I don't understand why this month's was from July 1 to 2/29/24, when in the past, the report was for the month. Could be an error. I'd like us to do both, to be honest. Yeah, I agree. That would be helpful. The other thing I don't understand is where's the money? In the revenue accounts for all the departments, I, there's no, there's no money in the act, in the month activity for revenue. Doesn't make sense to me. As far as the boat launch or the lands, I'm not sure, I'll just read it. The law, well, let me address the Parks workers. It's a done deal, you've already made your motion, but the office staff that's recently been hired, they were hired from the hourly wage of seventeen to twenty an hour. For comparison purposes, there's other professionals being paid something less than that. The basketball courts was discussed at the Parks Commission. The money that the Parks has available according to the budget was used to buy a truck. There's normal money according to the paperwork. There's no revenue. And as far as the law goes, let's talk about the lands that are adjacent to waterways. The rest of the law reads that a township abutting upon navigable waters in this state may acquire, construct, and maintain wharves, piers, docks, and landing places for the use and benefit of the public, and may lease and control the wharves, piers, docks, and landing places, period. The township board shall act for the township in acquiring, constructing, and maintaining wharves, piers, docks, and landing places if authorized to do so by the affirmative vote of three-fifths of the registered voters of the township voting on the question at the general or special election. That's the rest of the story. Thank you.
Public comment?
I just want to add a little bit. Don Webb, there are five tax assessing units that have melages. Four of those five cost centers are in the red right now. And they are the general fund, the fire fund, police, streetlights, and the library. That budgeted amount for property tax revenues is 1.88 million. Right now, those four that are in the red, $846,000. The law is that the General Property Tax Act, MCL 21433A, provides that local units of government with state equalized value of more than 15 million, we have that, shall, within 10 business days after the first and the 15th day of each month, account for and deliver to the county treasurer and other tax assessing units, that's our funds, the tax collections on hand on the first and the 15th day of each month. That starts December 1st, so December 15th, and I know that you know this. What I don't understand is why some of you are looking at and approving in a consent agenda these bills and tax, and financial reports with negative balances. If you look at, somebody should be raising their hand and asking why those balances are negative, and you're not. Right now, there's $5.9 million sitting in the tax account. It should be zero.
It's actually 6 million dollars.
Well, it was 5.9 when you ran this report.
Correct, because we run the report to get it out ahead of time.
Well, it was 1.7 at the end of December, 3.4 at the end of January, and 5.9 when you ran this report. It should have been zeroed out every month. It should not be 5.9 million. This doesn't include the $149,000 for the roads and sewer special assessments or the DVA. So that 846,000 is just for those four. That's negative. You guys have a fiduciary responsibility to manage these affairs in the best interest of the public. And the consent agenda being approved with financials in it is not in the best interest. This should be questioned.
Public comment, please. Public comment is closed. Oh, yes, yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Sorry. The only other thing I would really like to see in, in means of transparency is with the reports, a trial balance monthly. A trial balance says a whole lot more than just the balance sheet and everything. So, I mean, we're here in transparency, so that'd be a nice thing to see monthly.
The more we can post, the better, but thank you. Whatever that is, a trial balance. And any more public comment? Going once, going twice? Going three times? Public comment is closed. Board comment?
I'll start.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to thank Chris Green. Chris and I have been going through the trial balance. There are a number of things that we have worked to clean up.
Your microphone. Thank you.
Things, it's, it's, it's been interesting, things that the auditors have passed on for a number of years, like Eagles Nest. The assessment had a balance due. If you're looking at that from an accounting perspective, it looks like people had not paid the assessment. We don't believe that to be true. We're working on setting up a standard set of work papers to prove out the accounts in the trial balance on a monthly basis. So the challenge has been to figure out things, how they had been done, to create documentation, to continue to do them, no matter who is sitting in the seat. And for most of that, I've had to rely on the county and other treasurers. So I'm not making excuses. I agree that the money should have been moved, but in light of the fact that I'm learning the job, documenting the job, and trying to clean up account balances that have long, have been sitting there a long time, sort of like the parking lot lights that didn't go out last month or last year. So I'm asking for a little grace. I would like to settle up with the county. These are other, this is other people's money, and once I've dispersed it, I can't get it back. So I'm sorry again to have disappointed you and not met your expectations. I understand that there is a statutory requirement. The money sitting in the tax account, I'm working on distributing it now. I am in line to get settled up with the county. On deadline, ahead of deadline, they already have the backup for, for settlement. But thank you for your comments. And I appreciate the stepped up accountability. I hope we stay at this level of accountability, no matter who's in this seat.
Is there any other board comments?
Yeah. I just want to let everybody know that infrastructure is probably the biggest thing that a township can, government can do for the community. Because if you have good infrastructure, you're, you're increasing the quality of life of the people in your township, and you're also increasing the economic value of your township. If you have failing infrastructure, no one's gonna invest you in, you know, for a business or, or a home or something like that if you have failing infrastructure. So that is one of the main things that this board has, has really focused on. And that includes the CIP, the truck, the whatever, that's all infrastructure. That's all important. And we're trying to get the taxpayer money back into the community in the form of infrastructure. That is probably the biggest thing we can do for our township. That's why we've got a $200,000 grant. We got a million dollar earmark from the federal government. We got a three and a half million dollar grant from the earmark from the federal government for the, for the sewers. It's, it, and all this takes time. And it's a learning curve for all of us, you know, but we're learning, there's new rules all the time. And we were explaining it at the sewer committee meeting, that the rules for the last sewer project that went through, the manual is probably like this. The rules that we have to go by now is like this. It's changing all the time, getting harder and harder, more and more restrictive. They want more and more information out of you, and they're going through every little nut and bolt, and, and it just takes time to work through the bureaucracy. But the work that the people of this, of this office is doing, our employees and our other trustees, is, is, you can't imagine all what's going on behind the scenes as far as trying to get grants written. There's a lot to do if you're writing a grant. You have to get all the financials for so many years, for all this kind of stuff. It's, it, there's a lot to it, and it's not just done overnight. It takes weeks to write a grant. And when you're asking for a million dollars, you better make sure you got all your numbers right. It takes a long time. We're not paying anybody extra to do these grant writing. Bob right here, he's very familiar with writing grants, and so far he's done a really, really good job, has tapped into money that's available out there and brought it back into the community. But it takes time. There's a lot of work that's going on. And then once you get the grant, then you have to have a project manager, you have to, you know, get all this documentation, all this kind of stuff, you got bids, everything to go forward with that. So there's a lot of work after the fact that you don't see that's going on. So I just want to let you know that there is a lot of work getting put out in this office that you may not see, you may not notice, but we're all working very hard. And, and we're working for this community as a whole. And, you know, some people are saying, oh, we, we are doing special benefits for our friends. All of you are our friends. We consider all of you our friends, and we're trying to help the community, all the community. And we're, we're not like picking this person or that person, and we're only focusing on that. If we can do, like a nut, you came to me and said, I don't have a street sign. I used to have a street sign. I don't have a street sign anymore. What do I do? Go get your street sign. It's on order. It's not there yet, but it's on. We try to do the little jobs and the big jobs, but we're always working for this community. And for someone to think that we're not is just disingenuous. And, and I just want you to know, we're trying very hard. Everything is a learning curve because the rules are changing all the time, but we're trying to keep up. And, and we just want you to know that if we didn't believe in this community, we wouldn't be sitting in this seat. Thank you.
I know Jay's not here, but I just want to say to everyone that help with the election, kudos to you guys. That it went pretty good. And, right?
Because of all the help, yeah.
All cooperation, so.
Thank you.
Just want to give you kudos to that.
And our elected officials.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
She's shy. She did a hell of a, she did a hell of a job. Everyone did a heck of a job, and everyone was so nice when they came in. You know, I, I don't like to be negative, but this time I just can't let some of this fake news and disinformation continue to filter from some of the things I've heard tonight. Let's talk about transparency. I'm not gonna mention names, but when I first got elected as a trustee, I was lucky if I got a board packet the day before. Sometimes I didn't get a damn board packet until the day of, okay? I know everybody was busy. Now, the public sees it Friday, 5:00 PM, by 5:00 PM at the latest, and the public gets it before board members get it. I go out of my way to make sure, and it takes two weeks and about four people to do those board packets so everybody can see all the information that we're making decisions on. You can go to our website, Government Board Packet. It is always there by 5:00, most of the time. There was one time it wasn't. There was a problem with the website. But sometimes it's 250 pages, 300 pages, financial statements, galore. It makes my head hurt. And if we can put more up there, and I think we do plan to put up more, we're gonna do it. So we put our money where our mouth is. We said we were gonna put this stuff out there. It's there. You don't have to, and, oh, by the way, for the past two or three decades, the public never saw these board packets, ever. I can't tell you how many times we went to the Michigan Township Association, and I went and sat with Jeff Lawson at the county and getting advice from Mr. Wallace and the county IT people and the financial, financial people. So all this stuff about your friends and we want you to hide. And we have one individual in this room. It's just constant misinformation. I don't have any friends, right? I'm the township supervisor. Nobody likes a township supervisor, right? No, just kidding. But I'm sorry that you have to go through this unhinged tirade every meeting, but the lies and the falsehoods just continue. And as I keep telling people over and over again, I published my personal phone on the website. I've had people call me 10 o'clock at night, no problem, and I will call you back. Okay, but this stuff about, oh my gosh, I should, I wasn't guilty. The charges against me for, for causing the disturbance at the May meeting justice was served because the charges were dropped. Well, that, that went on forever. The charges weren't dropped. There was a deferred prosecution agreement that required 25 hours of community service and six months probation. So there's two sides to every story, folks. Give me a call.
Can I respond?
No, you cannot. Sit down. You had your chance. Sit down.
And your bulldog friend who has $15,000 posted judgments.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Mister, you, you need to leave. Right now.
No, I do not.
I'm not gonna. Motion to adjourn. Second?